Welcome. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. First, I need to check, does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
No. First up, approval of minutes. We have minutes from our meeting on August 20th, and we have Tim Skoggins, Ken Harrington, and Tony Krulikowski here, so we can approve those. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for August 20th as circulated.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion additions, corrections to the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the minutes for August 20th are approved by a vote of 3-0-0. Next up, warrants. First, I have check warrant number six, in the amount of $45,573.98.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Items over $1,000. We have $1,500 to Bennington County Sheriff, $15,000 to Bennington Rescue Squad, $1,100 to GA Bov Fuels, $1,900 to NorTrax Equipment Company? I don't know what that one is.
That's fixing the grader.
Okay.
With John Deere.
$3,000 to Landscape, Sycamore Landscape, for cemetery mowing. $6,800 to TAM. $2,600 to William E. Daley. $2,700 to William E. Daley. And those are the items over $1,000. Any other discussion on check warrant number six?
You said $60,000 for the Rescue Squad?
$15,000.
$15,000.
It was a budget line.
Oh.
That's why we're paying it now instead of community appropriations.
Alright, okay.
Yeah. Anything else? All in favor of approving check warrant number six, say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number six, in the amount of $45,573.98 is approved, 3-0-0. And I have payroll warrant number four, in the amount of $21,282.66.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, payroll warrant number four, in the amount of $21,282.66 is approved, 3-0-0. Are there any announcements? I will remind the public, we discussed at our last meeting that we are going to assign the sheriff to speed control at several spots around the town, beginning as soon as it can be arranged. We've had a lot of complaints about speed control. This is going to be the real thing. This is going to be the car hiding with a speed gun, writing tickets. We've tried putting the car out there where it's visible, people slow down while it's there, and then they speed up. We've put the radar speed control cart out there, people see it, they slow down when they see it, and then they speed up again. So, we're stepping it up a notch. So, everyone be warned that at several places around the town, particularly places with 25 mile an hour speed limits, the sheriff will be there at various times, writing tickets. Are there any public comments? Alright. First up, we have an interview with a candidate for Planning Commission, Naomi Miller.
Hi there.
Hi. You can probably sit at our table of honor overhearing, you'll actually have a better chance of not looking into the sun.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for raising your hand. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Planning Commission?
Well, I'm generally a civic-minded person. I've always tried to participate in whatever community I am a part of in as constructive a way as I can. I have a history of being very good at finding median grounds between disagreeing interests, and I've moved to Shasberry two years ago and retired from full-time work, so I have a little time to devote to my community. The Planning Commission interests me because it seems to me that this is a turning point in the community's relation to its identity and future. I mean, we could say that for all of rural America, really. And questions of how the town finds a way to keep its character and individuality and townness, while also finding ways to bring in new revenue and all of that, seems to me like sort of the issue of the town that I'm most interested in and possibly most capable of thinking about with others.
Good. How long do you live in Shasberry?
Two years.
Two years, yes, you said.
Yeah, I'm a Newb.
Yeah, yeah, well, good, good. I was looking at your background, you want to tell us a little bit about your background?
Yeah, so I'm a social worker by training, and I was a clinical social worker, which meant that I worked in community mental health for a long time. And then I kind of accidentally became a community college educator, and I did that for 30 years in a rural community college in an area of New Jersey, not unlike this one, where none of us think of New Jersey as having such areas, but it does. And in that capacity, I served on a million and one committees, and as the president of the Faculty Union for many years, as a department chair, as a program coordinator, as a student advisor, et cetera. So I was very actively involved in that community for a long time. And just retired, actually, less than a year ago.
Good. Do the other Board members have questions for Naomi?
How do you feel about a lot of regulations? I'm the kind of guy that, I lived in this town my whole life.
I'm sorry, I missed the first.
I said, how do you feel about too many or too few regulations?
Oh, regulations.
Because, like I say, I've lived in this town my whole life. And when I lived here, if you came up with the idea of putting zoning in, you'd likely find yourself hanging a tree out in front of your yard. So, I understand that you've got to have some kind of regulations for growth and all that, but I just don't think that anybody should have to, well, get a piece of paper to set a trash can in your yard, I guess.
Yeah. Well, I agree with you on that one, the trash can issue. I think that what, that everybody wants regulations of some sorts. And different people want different kinds of regulations. So, some people want speed limits, and some people some people want those speed limits in order to be able to drive their tractors on the road without getting killed. Other people want more complex kinds of zoning things, and it seems to me that the role of people who serve on a public board is not to meet their own agendas, but to reflect the needs of the community. So, there are some regulations I believe in and some I don't.
Everybody goes with that, I guess.
I think, yeah, and I'm not trying to just be a people pleaser by saying that, I just think it's really true. There are plenty of regulations that have been imposed in the world that I don't agree with at all, and others that I do, like speed, for example.
Thank you.
It may be worth mentioning, just in general, that the job of the Planning Commission is to interpret the town plan and to write zoning bylaws. One of the main jobs is to interpret the town plan and write zoning bylaws, which are then submitted to the Select Board for approval, and ultimately go to the public for approval. Just so that we all are clear on the process, Naomi is not going to write any regulations into law.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Goodness, no.
And neither are we, for that matter. Anything that gets to be a zoning bylaw ultimately is approved by the citizens.
So, why Shasberry, Vermont, to retire to?
Sort of complex, but mundane reasons. I have a lot of friends in Vermont. My wife and I have been coming here for a long time to visit people in various parts of the state, and we're fleeing what I would call overdevelopment in Orange County, New York, which has been seeing a kind of development that no amount of zoning could stop, even if one wanted to, but just too many people. And we bought land with a friend who works in Albany, and therefore needed to be within driving distance of Albany, so here we are in the corner of Vermont, closest to Albany. And very happy to be here.
It goes without saying that overdevelopment is not a problem we have here in Shasberry at the moment.
I've noticed.
We're trying to work toward that problem.
Yes. Clearly, we could use a little of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Alright. Would the gentleman like to discuss this in executive session, or do you feel ready to make a vote?
Point of order. We need a 14-day period for residents to submit letters recommending or commenting on the appointee.
Thank you for reminding me, yes, okay.
So we can have that discussion at the next Select Board meeting.
Okay, very good. So, in that case, I will remind the public that they are invited to to make comments on whether they approve or disapprove of Naomi Miller as a candidate for the Planning Commission, and we will take those comments into account, and 14 days from now should be our next meeting.
We'll make it the next meeting, yeah.
We actually have to wait, because we're a day late on our meeting, so technically we'll be getting...
Well...
Yeah, if this were a Monday, we could do it on the same day.
It technically says, residents may submit letters in support of or in opposition to an individual on comments. The framework of the way this is written would be, in January, announcements would be made of who is interested in the position, and the Board would vote at its second February meeting. So, the 14 days, I was just picking the beat, but we can make it to our next meeting. It's not set in stone.
Yeah, that is, yeah, let's remind ourselves, it's a policy. It's not set in stone. I think we would do well to get Naomi nominated as soon as possible, let's remember that our five-member Planning Commission Board has been operating as three members for a couple of years now. We're anxious to get closer to...
None of them can miss a meeting.
Yeah, so...
It's a core of three.
I think if, alright. We'll take public comments, and then we'll...
Decide then.
Decide.
This is a huge letter-writing campaign.
Yes.
Yeah.
That'll be fun.
Okay, that'll be great.
Alright.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for volunteering.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, next up, Treasurer's Report. Melanie Dexter.
Should I go over there, too?
Yes, you have to go over there. Set in front of whatever that contraption is.
I can just get you all set up.
Is that your box over there?
Yes. It's audio recorder.
Yeah, but we're not live this evening.
Oh, we're not?
No, because it's, somebody else at night.
That feed-in, is it tied to that audio, or is it separate? Oh, but you will...
I can do it in my computer.
Well, aren't you fancy? Okay.
Okay, let's see what was going on last month. We did our first draw on the line of credit. I also did that inter-fund transfer, you can see, that was to clear out all of the the money of the general fund from the reserve funds for the, to make things nice and tidy for Sullivan Powers, who are coming again tomorrow. So, that was just some hygiene. And also just to make sure that we had enough cash in the general fund to get us through this dry period before the tax money starts coming in. Not much else going on there. The rest of that is pretty standard. Reserve funds, you can see, we're looking at, and that's the garage bond there, it's getting slowly depleted as we do some of the preliminary work. So, we're down to $850,000 in the garage bond now. We did a couple more draws on that. If you want to look down at the comparison of this year, of actuals to budgeted, it looks a lot like last year. Revenues are a tiny bit lower, and expenditures are a tiny bit higher, but that's practically margin there or there. So, it's looking a lot like last year. It's too early to draw any conclusions about that. As I mentioned, Sullivan Powers is coming tomorrow, so we've all been madly putting things together, but Jordan came in June, so we did a lot of preliminary work then, so I'm hoping it won't be quite as intense. The other thing I'm doing all day, every day is fielding questions from attorneys and bankers and realtors about when the tax bills are going to come out, and it's, and also the occasional Select Board number. It's, everybody's frustrated, and I just wanted to make sure everybody understands why it's not possible to get them out, because, you know, I always say, because of grand lists, and I'm not sure that's really enough of an explanation for everybody, so I wanted to take two seconds to explain it. You guys have to set the tax rate. It has to be voted on in a meeting like this one. And the tax rate is the combined taxable properties is the top line, and then that's divided by the amount the budget says we have to raise through taxes. You divide, it's just simple, I mean, there's obviously a lot of other things that go into it, but it's a fairly simple calculation, and that's your tax rate. You can't print tax bills without the tax rate. So, that combined properties, that's the grand list, so that's what we're waiting for. It doesn't change all that much from year to year, it's, you know, there could be assessments, or... So, we know pretty much what it's going to be, but we don't know exactly what it's going to be, and until we do, and until it's lodged with the state, our hands are tied, and you can approve the tax rate, I can't print tax bills. So, that's, in a nutshell, that's why it's late this year. The listers have run into some problems, understandable problems, we've got a lot of turnover, and I'm sure they're closing in on it, but we'll probably, as soon as they do have one, we're probably going to need to warrant a special meeting for you guys, so you can submit the tax rate, and then I will be here until midnight the next day, printing and stuff. So, that's where we are.
Okay. You'll have to remind me, I don't remember, are we later than we usually are in setting the tax rate?
I might have to go back and check. I think last year you approved the tax rate in mid-August. And that was, that was a little earlier than it had been. We're late every year I've done it, this is the fourth year I've done it, and it's, we've had to get an extension every year. There are other towns mailing these out in July.
Yeah, the listers ask for an extension every year, is that creating a problem then?
Well, I mean, it's not a problem, it's just, it's actually normal for us, but it costs us money. I mean, it means we have to get a line of credit every year, and pay all that interest. There are people who have enclosures on their houses, and they keep saying, please, give me the new tax bill, and I say, don't even have a tax rate, can't do it. So, that's a cost. Other people like to have it as early as they can, so they can start planning the amount of money to set aside. You know, that's a cost, I guess. So, there are a lot of reasons to do it on time, and really no compelling reasons not to, so I think that, and the listers are on notice that we really want to get onto a schedule where they don't need extensions. Anyway, so that's where we are.
I think it's interesting to have a conversation with the listers, let them understand that.
Well, I think they understand. I think the issue really boils down to going through four professionals in four years.
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
And losing...
Four in three years.
Four in three years, and toss in the fourth year, because, you know, Jim was ill for quite a bit of the year. And so, we've had turnover, and, you know, I'm fully on board that this can be lodged, according to the Book of Listers, July 23rd. There's no reason why this can't be. I mean, our new professional's been on board, but learning through this process, having a little trouble getting the people from the state here to go through some things. But, as soon as we clear this up, it's all listed out in the lister's book. This by listing, this by listing, July 23rd, the grant list should be lodged, and really, we have two elected listers and a paid professional, and there's no reason with a full year that this shouldn't be lodged on July 23rd. I mean, it's been unfortunate, we went from one person who quit right in the middle of one season, and the other one quit, and then the last one left, all going to the state, by the way. So, now we have Bob, and I think one year, we should be able to get through the process. And by July 23rd next year, we should have a grant list on July 23rd, because it does cost us money. We have to borrow money, and we have to pay interest on the money, and it's thousands of phone calls, when's the taxes going out, which we can't do unless the job is finished, so...
And that, July 23rd, that includes quite a bit of time, actually, because the, it's frozen on April 1st, so that includes all this time for complaints and beatments, and so it's very doable. But it's hard once you're off it, because then adjusting to it means you've got to compress a lot of work into one time, into a shorter period, to get back on track.
And the last eight people have brought it to different stages, and then, well, I'm by the state, I'm leaving, and the next person picks it up, and everybody has their own little ways, and it's just caused more delays in this, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, you said that the listers have been put on notice, that we'd like to get that back on...
Oh, it's not that, not put them on notice, they're totally on board with that, it's not, there's no disagreement about this.
Yeah, but, as I say, every year that I've been on the Board, they have asked for an extension. I assume that was just, had become routine business, but it sounds like it doesn't need to be routine business, so... Let's communicate to the listers that we would like to see, as David says, get that done at the... The date you mentioned, July 23rd.
July 23rd, it's...
What is that date?
That's what it is from the state, July 23rd. From April 1st on, there's deadlines, there's dates for things to be done, and there's...
July 23rd is when the grand list is supposed to be filed?
Should be lodged down in the clerk's office, so that it can be given to the treasurer to print the bills.
Okay, so we're...
Month and a half, well, coming around.
July 23rd, so we're a month and a half behind that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, it bears mentioning that I'm collecting money for the schools, too, and they have a line of credit as well. So, it isn't just ours, and theirs is much bigger. And, you know, the money pours in, it's, people want to be the first one to pay, you know, there's a line out the door the day after there are people's mailboxes.
Yeah, well, if people are clamoring to give us money, and we're sitting on our hands keeping them from doing that, let's see if we can fix that.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, Roads Report. Welcome to our new Road Foreman, Michael Gagnati. Good Shasberry boy, been on the job for all of three weeks now?
Going on four weeks.
Four weeks, okay.
This is the fourth week.
Good. How's it going?
Good. Busy.
What have you all been doing out there?
In the last couple of weeks, we've been developing a few plans on, to get back on track. We've been grading, doing a lot of ditching. Ozley's in right now, mowing, he's doing his second mow for the year. We, I met with V-Trans today for a Better Backroads Grant that we have in Shasberry Hollow. Met with her this afternoon, so I'm developing a plan on attack, on how we're going to proceed that, because that's one of the grants we've got to do by the end of this year. Another project that's in the works is a RAS grant. What the RAS is, is to reclaim asphalt shingles, and the state is working with the town, and we're going to utilize that recycled asphalt into our gravel, and we're going to try it in a section of road. We're going to try it on Myers Road, just east of Bennett Hill, and we're going to head up Myers Road towards Eric Road. So, the guy, I just had Peckham trucking in the gravel, and the guys are, they mowed all the brush back, and they'll be ditching that road starting tomorrow, and continue grading North Road, East Road, trying to get caught back up. But, my plan is to design a grading plan and go from there. I still, I'm in the works on how I want to do that, but right now, I'm just keeping one grader moving, and I'm shorthanded with one guy with an injury, but the excavator's been ditching. We just finished up Eleanor's Way, seeded most of all that, Furnace Brook. Did a culvert in front of Karen Mellinger's on East Road, it was completely plugged. Finished that today. The guys finished ditching all the way to the top of the hill, because the water was started right at the top of the hill, and was just running right down, right over into her property, it wasn't draining properly. We replaced the culvert, so we'll see how it goes from there. Hopefully, solve the issue.
Back on the recycled asphalt shingles, tell us more about that. That is, you take recycled asphalt shingles and mix it in with the surface gravel?
Yeah, we went down to Ponell tried it a couple of weeks ago, and we went down and saw how they were doing it, and...
Who tried it, I'm sorry?
Oh, the Town of Ponell.
Town of Ponell.
And they ground up asphalt shingles, and they mixed it 80/20 with their gravel. And the guy from V-Trans said that they're trying to see if the shingles heat back up and like, kind of make the road compact better, and not as hard as it is when you mix the recycled asphalt. Like, if you mix recycled asphalt with the gravel, it really, it gets it so hard, you can't rework it, regrade it. So, they wanted to try this asphalt shingles, and it was more or less because when he was telling me that they have so much of it, and if it was to work, maybe that we could use it down the road, but it was just, it seemed like a good idea to try. We're trying it in a hill, a flat, in a muddy section. So, and we're going to ditch the road, so it gets proper drainage, and add 300, or 3 inches for about 800 feet, and compact it, and we'll see how it goes from there.
And what is the goodness we hope to get from mixing asphalt shingles with the gravel?
Well, I'll let you know in a couple of weeks.
Is it supposed to last longer, I guess?
I guess they were saying less maintenance, like, it's supposed to compact and drain, and not pothole as fast. That's what the... That's what the guy was explaining to me. He was saying that the emulsion in the shingles would heat up and bind together.
It's like a bonding agent.
They, they don't know if they have too little, too much, too less, so the percentages could go up, could go down.
Do you still use chloride when you do it?
Yes. Yep. That's what he, he said to, do your normal application just as, just as you were putting it down and grading. It's only twenty percent of, you really can't even know, I noticed it was in there, especially with this material. I mean, we, I picked it up in my hand and looked at it and was like, oh, there it is. Picked them out. I was gonna take a ride down and check it out, just haven't had time.
Does it have to be a certain air temperature to do that, Mike or not?
He didn't say.
Then just later you just mix it, then when it gets warmer, you get a little-
Yeah, we're gonna mix it here in the yard and then we're gonna truck it out with our trucks and spread it, grade it and compact it. See what happens.
One thing I'd like to see is, I'm perfectly confident-
Yeah.
That you know good gravel when you say it. And I had bought a kind of gravel from Daley, from Peckham. Would be as good as the shoulder gravel at half the price.
Yeah.
And then I bought it when, I left it in the truck one night and it rained that night. I couldn't get it out of the truck next morning. So I'm perfectly confident that you know the difference.
Yes, I do.
And if you can use the kind of gravel, I'd like, we could save a lot of money that way.
The, I talked with him about that and the kind of gravel for that pro, is the stone's too big.
Well, uh, yeah.
But the kind of gravel does work.
Oh, yeah.
It has its place.
Do they always, are they still making that with inch and a half stone or they making it smaller now?
It looks like it's a three-quarter inch.
Three-quarter?
Yeah, we used some around that culvert that we had stockpiled out here. It looked like it was one inch, three-quarter.
Cause I've used it for driveways and just use that and I use any bank run or anything.
Yeah.
For makes and tap all together, it's, you know, like I say, it's half the money.
Yes, depends on what vein they get.
Well, no, I know. It's, that's why I said, I trust you to make up your, to make up your mind.
Put it in the right place.
Uh, with this, with the RAS, uh, as we always do, I need the board's permission to sign a grant application, get it back to the state so we can move forward with this. They are giving us money for this. They're paying for the material, uh, for the shingles and for it to be trucked down here.
So we need a motion?
Yeah, just, just like we do with all the, the grants.
Is there a motion to give David the authority to sign the RAS grant?
Yes.
Moved by Tony?
Certainly.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tony?
Yes, aye.
So, um, by a vote of three, zero, zero, David is given permission to sign the RAS grant. Okay, good. What else?
Um, trying to think. Uh, we, we got the hollow, the hollow project will be our next one. That's, that one's, I got my head wrapped around that right now and how we're gonna go about that. Um, Greater Heights is gonna be working with us to do some tree and canopy work on East Road. Just got a price from them, three days worth of work. Um, and then we're gonna move forward and get a few more prices for White Creek Road from Cold Spring Road all the way to the border. Need some canopy work done there, get some sunlight in and possibly Buck Hill, so he's getting back to me on that.
Go ahead and remind us what the Shasbury Hollow project is?
The Shasbury Hollow project is, consists of five different sections. It's mostly just, it's a Better Backroads Grant and it's just, um, pretty much roadside maintenance. Ditching, some tree removal and gravel and some stone line ditches. And there's one section, uh, just before Sleepy Hollow that's real wet in there. So there's some of that section that's gotta get excavated out, fabric, gravel, just reconstructed and more pitched towards the inside corner and stone line ditch, keep the water draining. It's, um, pretty much just typical maintenance. But it's, it's broke down in five different sections.
David, I, I, I guess I still need to be reminded just of, on detail, is this part of the, the watershed project or is this for the one where we're just, we wanted help with figuring out?
Well, this is a grant that goes along with, with the, uh, it's a road general permit and our interconnected waterways and roadways and all that. That's, that's where this really came from. Uh, one thing that, that we've been talking about is we'll probably be getting a contractor on this too to limit the amount of time crew spends on it. Uh, do you remember we did Tinkham? That was a similar grant, uh, another grant and aid. And, uh, the crew did that and that turned into a little bit more time and, uh, we, we reimbursed quite a bit for that, but instead of being reimbursed, we'll just, uh, hire someone out to do most of this. We'll have our own time on it as match and whatever, but, uh, because this grant is, is ending at the end of the year, we might just get a contractor to help us move it along some. Uh, and that's kinda what the grant's for too, so. We, you can do it either way. I think it's just better to have a contractor involved in this one. So we'll be looking at that.
Yeah, I, I feel that's probably the way to go. We wanna keep up on some of our other routine maintenance activities.
Yeah. Good. Just so the board knows too, we'll be buying an awful lot of tires. Uh, tires for the John Deere grader and tires for the, uh-
Tobacco.
Tobacco. So, uh, the tires for the deer will probably come in under ten and the tires for the backhoe will come in under three. So we'll get three bids for each and, uh, sign it out to somebody.
Did we budget for those this year?
Um, I wasn't really told that we needed them, so it wasn't really budgeted and we have no choice, so it'll come from somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, they're quite old.
And we're limping that one grader along.
Yeah, so there's really no option.
Not at all suggesting we shouldn't buy them. I just was-
Yeah, no, I know. I, I kinda wish I-
I couldn't remember all the lines in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And we had budgeted to retire one of them a couple of years ago and we were told in advance that we put eleven thousand dollars in there to do it and, uh, you know, I don't, I don't actually check the tire depths.
So we, uh, can we, look, can we-
That won't happen again.
No, these can't be recapped. They're too far gone.
There you go.
Oh.
They're too far gone. They came, you know, you know.
They came, I had two guys look at them today and they're too far gone to retread.
They hadn't asked.
I know, I asked too because it, it, I mean, it's time to get new tires. It's not like we can block it up and take them off.
Yeah.
If we, if they were worth retreading, it'd be worth sending them out and-
Yeah.
The good thing is, uh, and Mike had this idea, which, which I like, is to get a, a quality tire that's also a winter tire for both vehicles. Because the, at, at, the grader of course can be a plow, you know, it's another redundant, redundant seat to the fleet. And the backhoe, which could always have to go out in winter in clear intersections, would be better with, with better quality, uh, snow tires. Like year-round tires, but they're, they're made for snow, so I think that's well worth a few hundred dollars extra investment on both of them.
So like a, like a, an all-weather tire, not a, not a soft snow tire that's gonna get worn out?
The state switched to- I started running these snow tires and they, they seem to be wearing really well. They just went to their loaders, their backhoes, the graders and, and they all run on pavement all summer long and, and in the winter. So they, they've seen the hold up pretty well.
Okay.
But they're really good in the snow too.
Okay.
And all, all that equipment can be utilized for snow removal or even the backhoe. If you had to go out and fix something, a drainage frozen, drain, ditch culvert, I mean, the tires that are on it are not gonna be safe to be used.
Okay.
Where do we stand with the, uh, snow cloud for winter day? As far as having enough help?
Uh, well, it, well, it hinges on the next four to six weeks, say, uh, when we get an update on, on-
Well, let's still get us time to get a contract-
Let's still get us somebody, yeah.
If we have to.
I think we'll find someone to jump into that if we need to. I have a few people in mind actually. But, uh, you know, we will make that move for another four to six weeks. I'm hoping that we'll have Tim back, uh, you know, in, in that time. Not in four to six weeks, but in time for the first snow. So we'll just sit on it for a little bit and we'll see. But we're, yeah, we'll have our five and, but it has to be, it has to be six, whether there'll be significant delays in finishing routes.
How's that, uh, how, how do we call it, what? Adventure?
Oh, that's probably not even next summer, probably the summer after. The grant doesn't expire till twenty-two.
Fiscal year twenty-one.
Fiscal year twenty-one, which is the end of, of, uh, twenty-one, so, you know, we have time. That's, I'm just a matter of, but, once Mike gets, uh, once we get into the winter and we have some time, we can sit down, we can write the specs to put out the bid. We can put it out the bid and, you know, we'll take it from there.
Has anybody checked that? Have you seen what's got worse?
Uh, I don't know. We'll have to look at it. I drove over it. Does that count?
Yeah.
Well, B, if you go two and it's worse.
Uh, I haven't, but it's still, the thing is, we're, we're still with, uh, three to four years left on its expected lifespan. So, cause I was actually not expecting to get the structures granted here.
Yeah.
But, uh, now that we have it, and we actually need another year to mass enough of our end of this project to, to actually pay for it, so.
You know, you know that color we're talking about, right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I gave them the paperwork and, uh, you know, the best, the best thing is we have the entire plan from what we were, we've already paid for on a different grant. Now we just need to put it to bid and find a contractor to put it together, so. Uh, but there's lots of time on that one. We wanna get some other things settled and get some other things changed before we start with that paperwork. No, no, it's not, it's not forgotten. It's too big a, too big a pile of money on the desk to figure out. Seventy-five thousand they're giving us. We have to build something.
All right. Anything else on roads? Michael, you wanna stick around while we talk about the garage?
Yeah.
Dave?
Uh, well, as you can see, anybody who's been up there, there's a great deal of work's been done. Everything but the actual transfer station has been knocked down. Uh, the foundation, the footings for the new garage's been poured. Uh, the building is gonna be delivered on the sixteenth and the entire thing is, my understanding, will be delivered. And then it'll go up quite quickly and then the interior work, you know, goes on for months after that. But, uh, in a, in a month, it's gonna look like an entirely different place up there with the building up, the roadway adjusted to go into the new transfer station. Uh, we've talked with, with Trevor at TAM about some adjustments we need to make to the transfer station. Want to put up some railings that we're gonna do and TAM's gonna assist us with that, just some railings around the dumpsters. Uh, uh, pretty much came out of this very roomy area. I think it should work very well. Uh, a few signs, we're gonna be in here with, uh, TAM on the seventeenth, uh, discussing the new contract for the operation of the transfer station because our contract expired. As you might remember, three months ago, we put an extension on it to see where we were going with the new setup here. Uh, so there'll be some changes with that. Other than that, it's, it's moving along. We're, we're probably going and still a week, two weeks behind, which is nothing in a project this scale. Really nothing. Our, our long-term plan is that, uh, we will still have a stockpile here. We'll probably store it with salt and this thing, depending on the, when the salt shed is actually done, the storage shed is actually done, we can start putting salt in a mixer up there. But we're gonna have to keep everything going down here because it's still a construction site until the keys are turned over to us. So we're gonna have to plan on both. When we start moving, which is actually a good thing because it's winter, uh, part of the thing with the audit, going back to the audit for a minute, is having to have a complete inventory. So that'll be very easy to do as we move things from here to the new buildings so that we know exactly what we have and we don't bring all junk with us. Uh, the long-range plan, we're gonna store stuff in this building. All the stuff we're gonna auction and sell in the spring. And we'll just have it out of this building this spring. We have trucks, we have equipment, we have all kinds of stuff to get rid of, but we're gonna do it in one shot and, uh, piecemeal it out. Uh, and the transition we're gonna take, uh, as it comes, as Mike thinks he can get things in there and still function in the middle of a snowstorm, you know, it's, it's gonna be interesting, but when it's done, it doesn't mean we have to run over and jump in. It's just, okay, we'll move this in, we'll move that in. We have a couple of days where we can do some work over there. It's gonna be some re-establishment, but, uh, we're well within, uh, our budget predictions and, uh, it's just been going along fine, you know? So the project's running smoothly at this point.
Good.
That's really it. Oh, we are having a construction meeting this week. It'll be, we're starting, uh, now, uh, weekly meetings on the garage with, uh, myself, uh, Russell, uh, MSK and Goldstone. And, uh, anything of, of interest, because a lot of this will, will be a discussion of, you know, is that foundation where it is, you know? So it'll be, uh, more technical things than anything else. Any money issues come up, of course it's gonna come back here. But I'm not really anticipating anything. The beauty of the building is, this is the building. There's not much you can do to it. It's already manufactured, so it's coming like this and things have to go where they're in the plans. There's not, not much option to, to do anything, so. Uh, it'll go along very smoothly.
Good.
Except for Shelley's shed. Shelley's shed, we're gonna move probably next week and we're hoping it doesn't flake.
Sticks together.
Yeah, I, well, she wa, she wanted to keep it, so I said, okay, but I already have my eye open for another shed.
Does it, does it get a new paint job at least? So it matches everything?
No, she's-
Is the contractor moving it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I told her to take, I said, she's on vacation this week. I said, take everything down. You know, this isn't velvet glove treatment. This is gonna be like a forklet picking this thing up and driving it over, so.
Yeah, we should, uh, I, I'm with you. We should be thinking about a new shed for her.
Well, I, I think what it came down to was a twenty thousand dollars they had on the original plan for a shed, which was kinda ridiculous. I mean, I can go to that place in, in Rutland that has all those things and get a shed for-
Right over the line.
Yeah, 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 right over here, yeah. So, you know, we'll, we'll find something. We'll, we'll can roll into this because when we find something, it's just a matter of, uh, and this might take a year. Let's finish the main project before we spend money. But then we can roll out and get something. Cause I did get a grant for a smaller shed to put behind it. If you've been up there, there's a cement pad there, which is, you know, meant for the, uh, I always think recycling, but it's the-
Swap shed.
No, no, not the swap shed. No, not the swap shed. The swap shed is gonna be very small. Yeah, the swap shed, it's part of the swap shed and, and, uh, organics, thank you, organics. So, uh, but as long as we're talking about the swap shed, the swap shed is gonna be greatly reduced. The swap shed has turned into a collection of, of things that people, yeah, don't wanna pay to throw out. And we have dirty appliances. We have one ski. We have a ski boot. We have this, we have that. We have stuff in there. It started as an idea from what I'm told from Shelley, which just, she liked to have books around. It was books, people portrayed books. Now it's turned into anything, when you turn your head, there's a broken chair in there.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's out all around pouring out. It's just dirty and it's messy and it's, it's not what it is. And people, when I've been up there, they've asked and I said, well, take it to Goodwill. Take it to Goodwill. That's where people go look for this stuff. This is just turning into,
Yeah.
you know, worth throwing stuff out and paying for it. It's not making any sense to me.
Right.
So the swap shed will be part of the discussion on the new contractor operation of the transfer station. Cause, uh, I think we really do need to make some operational changes there and, uh, join the way most other transfer stations are operated. But we'll discuss that in a couple of weeks. But meanwhile, the transfer station's almost done. I mean, like, we had talked, Mike and I had talked to Trevor. We had a meeting about, like I said, putting some railings up and just different things, how we want things to be. But otherwise, it, it looks good. It's, it's, uh, it's really pretty roomy when you, when you go around it. There'll be plenty of places for everyone to park and talk. That's about all I have for that.
All right.
Uh, one question, Dave.
Yeah.
Look at those garage doors over there. They're gonna have power overhead doors for the new garage, right?
Yes.
Is there an override that, a manual override kicks power goes off?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you can pull the chain.
All right.
Yeah.
It's very embarrassing when you can't get out.
Yeah, we also have a big generator.
We do?
Yeah. We, we have a real big generator.
All right, okay.
Yeah. What is it, seventy-five?
I, I just saw it on the print.
Yeah, no, it's a big generator. Actually, we're, we're having this discussion, they, the, it came back, I think it was, uh, forty-eight and the original plan says seventy-five, so we either want, if they can say, the electricians can show that a forty-eight kilowatt will work, instead of the seventy-five that was in the bid, then we want money back.
Correct, yeah.
You know, so, uh, I don't know, they're arguing this and it's a little bit over my head, but, uh, Jack bought it and Jack's looking into it and, uh, you know, we'll see what, we'll see what they say. But yeah, there's a generator, propane generator built into this thing, so.
Okay, I, I don't remember that. Okay, I, I don't remember that one.
We will not be without power, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this came up in early discussions with the engineers and the, the architects, you know, about how much generator we needed, and, uh, it sounded like a big question was whether or not having the overhead doors, uh, run off the generator was a requirement, or if in a pinch, without electricity, you could use the change to get in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the new ones have that release on top, so you can run them up and down manually.
So, I mean, one question of, you know, forty-eight versus seventy-five on the generator is, you know, is it, is it covering the overhead doors?
Yeah, yeah, all, all the systems, the whole building, the totality of everything has been taken in, and then prioritized what systems we really need to work. You know, because we have the gradient heat, I mean, we have to make sure that that always fires up.
Yep, that's a priority.
We'll have a huge problem. Uh, and then it's, you know, of course, the lighting, because we, we'll always need external lighting, especially in dead winter, when we're most likely to lose power. Uh, but then, you know, the doors have to be right up, you know, the kitchen can come in last, uh,
Right.
But the doors-
I'm sure it'll run it at the, the big garage I was in, the ju, backup generator ran the doors.
I, I would think so. The starter power on the motor on the doors can't be that much. You know, even if you did one at a time, I mean, it can't be that big a draw. Once they're running, they, they'll take a lot less.
Well, would that be classified as-
The architect's thinking that was one of the major draws on, on the generator, was the overhead doors, so.
Well, that's, that's why, that's why we have to, yeah, and he's looking into it, so, uh, I might find out about it Thursday, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, since that had come up.
Would that be classified as civil defense? Uh, shelter?
No.
No?
We're not, certainly not sheltered, no.
Well, what, an emergency?
Well, this is sheltered.
I'm just saying.
No, this is sheltered school, when we're not getting, you know, that's a-
Well, it's just thought, you got it.
No, it's also a pretty dangerous place when white people into. Seeing that these guys would have to be actively involved in any recovery in the town.
Yeah, that takes a lot of planning to designate something, a, uh, an emergency shelter.
Yeah, and then this is the best one, it can feed, it has the kitchen, everything else, that's why.
It's just thought.
But, you know, if somebody showed up at his doorstep, Michael would probably let him in. Let him into the break room.
Yeah.
They have a toaster oven, they can-
Yeah. All right, good.
Well, not yet, anyway.
Anything else on the garage or the transfer station?
No, I don't think so, I think that's, except for now.
All right, you have here SWIP grant support letter.
Yes, it's a letter that, um, we are applying for a grant to SWIP to get a municipal planning grant. Um, it's just another funding source for, uh, every town except Dorset and Sunderland are currently in the process of applying for a municipal planning grant. So this'll be a letter of support to the town of Dorset that they'll send in as they apply for a municipal planning grant for the SWIP that we all belong to. Uh, that'll just get us the funding that we need to provide education sources and everything else as part of the regular SWIP program.
Okay.
So, this, this requires Tim's signature.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, well, it can hurt to have a motion, I don't have a motion.
So I'll make a motion to, to, uh, support the SWIP grant for-
The town of Dorset.
Town of Dorset.
All right, we have a motion from Tony to allow the chairman to sign a letter of support for a SWIP grant to be sent to the town of Dorset, the solid waste-
Seconded.
Implementation plan. Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the, uh, the motion to allow me to sign a letter of support for the solid waste implementation plan grant is approved three zero zero.
And then I just have a couple more things to go through. Uh, we did receive a ten thousand dollar grant today, uh, for work in the parks, to put in a playground at Howard Park and, uh, fix the, uh, pickleball court.
Excellent.
And, uh-
It's the fastest-growing sport in the country.
That's what I've heard, and we are on the cutting edge.
Where's it gonna be?
Uh, on the tennis courts, on the Eastern Rose Tennis Court. Because the whole pickleball court fits on one side of the tennis court, so we'll have two pickleball courts-
Oh, cool.
Painted in, and with that goes fixing some cracks, and, and one of the posts twisted on the tennis court, so we'll fix those. Uh, we priced out and designed a playground for Howard Park that will be between, in the outfield, between, just a little bit to the north of the pavilion. Uh, and we're looking at eventually putting an access road in there and, and other things. But, uh, the grant, uh, allows us to do everything except pay for the Howard Park sign, the dog park, which we have been talking about, the water fountain, and recycling trash cans. We can't use money for that, but, uh, in the list of things we applied for, the, the playground equipment alone is over twelve thousand dollars, so the ten thousand will be buying the playground equipment, so that'll work out very nice. Now, this is a project that, uh, the pickleball's already scheduled. The company will be doing that in the next four weeks, and the rest of it we'll pick up in the spring. Uh, new sign and that, we'll, we'll all pay for ourselves, but the equipment will be ordered. We have to have the same, uh, surface material that we put in Cleveland Park, you know, the approved playground surface material, so we'll, we have to do some excavation, and this probably will not be the road group, because we'll pay for someone else to do this, so that they have time to do the roads, um, and we'll put this up there, so. There'll be a spring project, but it'll be a nice, nice project. Have a little playground up in the, up in the park, which will be close to the pavilion where people rent out, so their kids can play right there. Parents can actually watch the baseball game, or watch the soccer game, or even have some tennis, and the kids will be playing right there, so, and, uh, the dog park will probably be one of the things, I'll have to wait a little bit, but we'll see about that in the spring.
Where are we with the water fountain?
The water fountain, uh, probably will go in next year, because we're already so late in the season, we'll be turning the water off in about six weeks.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we go ahead and try to get that water fountain in, so that when spring comes and we open the park, we have the water fountain in place, rather than getting it in place, you know, taking a couple of months after thought.
Yeah, we can put it in. Yeah, I was hoping that they would help pay for it, but they're not, so we'll just go ahead and buy one now. Yeah, I can get any plumber to put it in, so.
Yeah, I mean, we built the, uh, we, we drilled a well with the intention of getting a water fountain in, so let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Even if it gets in, you know, the day before we shut it down, at least it'll be there when we, uh, we open up in the spring.
Okay, I have a few other bookkeeping things from the town clerk. Uh, because no one, uh, let's see, I'll just read off one of these. At the Australian vote held on March, in March twenty eighteen, the position of grand juror, the position of town agent, and the position of auditor, uh, remain vacant as no one can receive the minimum number of votes, thirty required by law. Therefore, the board of selectmen may choose to appoint a voter of Shasbury to fill the position until the next annual meeting to be held in March twenty nineteen. Uh, as far as the grand juror and the town agent goes, these are basically non-functioning positions, so I would suggest just shelving those two.
Agreed.
There is a auditor position open.
Yes.
The auditors are, are working fine. This is Bob Holmes' position when he, uh, didn't wanna come back, and, uh, I would invite anyone, the board invite anybody to put in for the auditors' position. It is nice to have three. Uh, so that's an open position, and if anyone would like to put a letter in, bring it up to the board and have them be interviewed.
Absolutely. We invite, uh, anyone who'd be interested in serving the town in that manner to, uh, let David know, and we will certainly consider your nomination with eagerness.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the last thing is, uh, just a reminder for the board that we are having a tax sale, uh, ten AM on October fourth. Uh, just so the board is aware of that, I'll have details on the single property involved later. Which is so you can have it on your calendar, but it's always best to have a selectman at it in case we need to be the ones bidding for it.
Yeah, I should, I can probably do it, that's a Thursday. Ten AM, Thursday, October fourth. Okay. I'll plan on being there. All right. What else you got?
That's it for me.
Okay. Um, reviewing action items, um, last time we told you to talk to the sheriff about our speed control schedule, did you get feedback from him?
Yeah, it's gonna take a little while to, to get this arranged, but, uh, they will cover the streets. I also asked him to prepare, uh, a sheet that we use to use that allows the deputies to check off different speeds as cars go through the radar, so we can get some idea of the actual speed that's being done. We have different systems. We used, um, a plate that you can put on the road, no bigger than this, that, uh, you would cover with a little tar, uh, like Matt, and then you download the data into a computer, but, uh, you know, what they have here is just one sign that's telling you your speed, so you never get an accurate speed, because people just know the sign's there and slow down, so, um, they'll be setting it up, rotating the shifts around, to start covering the times and hours, uh, that we requested, and we'll get a little feedback on the speeds involved to see exactly what we're talking about.
Well, we can, we can get the, the information when they write a summons, right?
Oh, yeah, well, we always get the summons information.
Okay.
But the summonses aren't gonna reflect the, the predominance of the, of the speed of the road. They'll be the outliers.
Right, yeah. All right, that was, uh, previously, and tonight, uh, the only one I caught was, uh, I told David to move the water fountain this fall. Anything else that we said we were gonna do?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, she will, uh, Naomi will be back on the next meeting. Or, well, she should, should I ask her back, or we'll just take the vote on the next meeting?
She doesn't need to come back, no.
Okay.
Unless, you know, we were to get, um, say, negative comments from the public, she might want a chance to address those.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm anticipating that we don't get, um, feedback from the public, so, if, if that's the case, she does not need to come back.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Ken. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.